Check in for Tuesday, August 12, 2025. It's 11:35. We're getting a late start because we just finished up our agenda-setting work session. But we do have about 25 minutes or so to cover a few items. Public virtual tenants YouTube channel will be posted there. Are we live streaming too?
Right now.
Okay. If we have problems with our livestream, which we have had this morning, it will be posted at a later point in the near future because we'll be recording it as a backup. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of this meeting and distributed to the board. Action may be taken at this meeting. So first item is reports on external boards and commissions. Does anyone have a report on an external board? Before we, Commissioner Klaus?
I have a quick one. We had a Jazzcom meeting last night and there was a budget amendment that we approved for $80,000 to supplement the 2025 veterinary services. Animal Services has adequate funding and reserves for their medical expenses to cover this request. And the justification behind it was there was a 43.3% increase in charges from Blue Pearl, which is the more costly of the two emergency veterinary providers due to reduced availability and two significant invoices totaling $28,165 resulting from recent animal cruelty cases. And there was also a conversation about an unprecedented increase in the amount of animal cruelty cases. So kind of trying to figure out what's going on there. But yeah, we approved that budget amendment last night. And we also are looking into actually kind of final, in the final stages of signing a contract with Mason County to provide services there. The services wouldn't begin until January 2026, but that's good news for Jazzcom because it would bring in more revenue. And since it's a contract, not an update to the ILA, we wouldn't be getting an appointed representative from Mason County. It would just be similar to kind of like what we're doing with BuCota, where we have a contract for services, but they don't sit on the commission. And
Do you know, like, what's the magnitude of that contract? Like, how much would they?
It's not as much, it's not like as significant as what we receive here. It's not full service or anything like that. Off the top of my head, I don't know the full extent, but I do remember that it would be, I don't want to misspeak, but I just, it's not as significant as we have here.
What kind of service do they want? Shelter or?
I would have to, I didn't take a note on that, but I can find it and then have it like by tomorrow. So I can update you tomorrow on that.
In the ILA, we all cost share based on our number of residents, right?
Yep.
So then but then there, that county is just a contract for service, so they wouldn't be cost sharing with us, so it wouldn't.
Right. Yeah. So it's similar to like, we have contracts for BuCota and a couple other areas, but yeah, Yelm, but they don't have like an appointed representative. So it's similar to that kind of a model.
They've like figured out like what the service costs and then bill, they bill it out. Like they're basically giving them an opportunity to like pick from, you know, rather than being a full partner and getting the full thing and sharing in the shelter cost, they they basically get billed for the services they want. That was something we debated when I was on the board because I don't think that had been done prior. And I think we added, I remember Yelm was the first one to bring in and give them, we worked out some kind of contract rate for something for what they wanted. So
Are there staffing requirements? Will it require additional staffing?
I think that it might require one additional staff person. I'm looking in the presentation last night now and I know, I remember now that they had a conversation, they presented to the Mason County Board of County Commissioners. There wasn't detailed information on or meeting minutes from that meeting that were included, but I can get more specifics and give another update tomorrow on that.
Yeah, I would appreciate the kind of with, you know, especially with another county coming in, kind of like what the cost is, that they're going to be paying. And kind of like what services it is, kind of like the services that they're being offered, right, based on, you know, and how much they're, they're being charged. I mean, just for consideration, I think for, for us, as we're going through budget shortfalls and, you know, there's a situation where, you know, I think this is going to be one of the contracts we're going to have to consider. So
yeah.
Seeing if there's alternatives or opportunities for us, I think would be great. So
okay.
Yeah, any information, I would appreciate it.
But we don't, we're not, you know, well, we have an ILA that we're in that is like a joint ILA with multiple jurisdictions. We don't have, we're not. So you're saying, well, maybe we could do a contract instead of an ILA and look at our service levels and?
I don't know. I just kind of want to see what Mason County has and see like if there are any opportunities for us. I, you know, I just don't know. Right. I think this is a conversation we're going to be having at the end of the year in terms of like, okay, what do we, where do we cut? And and so I just, you know, if there are other options out there that we can possibly have, I would like to possibly take a look at it. Not to say that, you know, that's the direction we're going to be heading in, but I just, I think everything's up. So.
Yeah, I will say it's a substantially lower amount of services than what we have here. It's not something that really would be very feasible for Thurston County.
Or even comparable, probably.
Yeah, yeah. But I will get that information and I can bring it back tomorrow.
Did you say that the board approved the arrangement?
We, it wasn't based on a vote, but it was discussed that the contract will be signed this year. So the vote to approve that contract will come at a later time, probably at our October meeting. So there's time to get more info before that's approved officially.
It'd be great if we could get the, the contract, like a draft, so we can share with commissioners.
I, I want to look at all of them. I think they got one for Nisqually Tribe and they have one for Yelm and they have one for BuCota. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other updates?
And then the Thurston County Prosecutor's Office has a new DPA assigned to all animal crime felony referrals. And so there was a conversation between their field officer, their field service officer supervisor and the DPA for Thurston County to kind of establish clear lines of communication and expectations around case coordination. So that's another exciting development. It sounds like they're working on establishing a strong partnership early on. So that's good news.
Can I ask, how much has the animal, animal abuse rate? How much has it gone up in Thurston County?
Let me find that.
It's had a big one the other day.
Yeah.
Another big chicken ring, I believe.
Well, in the report that the sheriff posted, right, kind of showing lower statistics for children, it was up. So statutory rate and child abuse cases were up. So I'm like, and, and so I'm like, okay, why are those cases up? And so just curious also about like animal abuse, like there's something on there. I'm not sure, like, but it's just hearing, you know, just seeing that on the report, it was great that other things are down, but then just seeing that children are risking our community is concerning. And then just hearing also that these rates are also up for animal abuse. I, I won't put you on the spot right now, Commissioner Klaus, but if tomorrow, yeah.
That too. Yeah.
Okay. Other board, external board reports? Anybody have something? I can report on the insurance fund. Went to my first meeting. It was actually pretty interesting. The first thing that happened is we get a this is, I mean, this is actually of interest to the board. So I, I didn't know a lot about the insurance fund. What I didn't know was that it was, it's a pool, but it's a, it's a limited pool, like not every county's part of it. In fact, a lot of counties apparently, apparently there aren't a lot of counties that are part of it, were part of it and like other non-county government entities like transit, island transit and I don't know, I'm trying to remember. There was, oh, like a certain housing authorities. So it's like govern, governmental groups, not just county governments are joined, but it's not like, it was unclear to me how many counties in Thurston, in Washington State are part of this pool, but it's not all of them. And first thing that happened was we had it was in executive session, so maybe I can't talk about it yet, but essentially there was an issue with some, some, some activity from WAC and it was executive session and I ended up accusing myself because I'm on the board of the WAC board, but I'm also on the board now of the insurance fund. So something for us to talk about maybe at a later point. But that was all interesting to meet some of the folks there. There were some familiar faces to me like Tom Handy. Is it Franklin County where Pullman is?
Oh, that's Whitman County.
Whitman County. So Whitman County Commissioner, who I serve on the Building Code Council with, good to catch up with him and got to meet all the staff. So it was an interesting meeting and there's some insurance rates, you know, things are generally going up, although some are not for various reasons, but yeah, I mean it. I don't know what I should really report on there. Just double check and see if there's anything really important. There, there, oh, one thing that was interesting was there's a no director. There were some issues, I guess, with Commissioner Edwards probably reported on this at some point, but there were some legal issues with certain accountant and director and and so the director was moved along and now they're in a, in a search for a new director and it's actually been sent like kind of a survey, like what kind of sort of skills or qualifications are we looking for? Which I didn't know how to answer that since I hadn't even been to a meeting at the, at that point, but they're in the middle of a search for a executive director for the insurance fund. And one thing that came up that I thought was interesting, I mentioned it to Commissioner Mejia, but they, they talked about something called an HRA, Health Reimbursement Arrangements. Sounded something like, I don't know what exactly what it is. It sounded kind of like, like health accounts for employees, but it's, it's something you can do is, oh, HRA, HRA accounts, Health Reimbursement Arrangements. They, they, they created $600,000 of savings for island transit and somebody explained that. And then the gal that kind of works on it says, you know, a few years ago, we did a workup for Thurston County and was going to save you guys like $2 million. Things got in the way and we never moved forward with it, but I just thought I would throw that out there to staff if it's some, you know, with our tight budget times, if there's something that could be done and looked at, some work that's already been done that might end up, you know, saving us some money that maybe it wasn't as attractive to us a few years ago, but it might be attractive now given the budget crisis that we're looking at. So I wanted to throw that out there. It was a workup from the staff member on HRAs and how that would apply to our benefits packages for our employees. Carrier renewals, yeah. Dental was pretty minor. Yeah. I think I'll leave it at that. That's, that's about all I had in terms of external. Anybody else with an external? Okay. Let's go to our commissioner item number one, proposed letter of support for United Way for release of FEMA Emergency Food and Shelter Program Funds. This follows up on a previous discussion. I think the previous discussion was that the board would like to support a United Way letter versus kind of lifting one up on our, and Commissioner Klaus had volunteered, but it sounded like, I was copied on some conversations. It sounded like that was proceeded through and we've now got a draft support letter and it looked good to me, but was there anything county manager or Commissioner Klaus you wanted to say? Is the idea a thumbs up on this support letter?
I would turn over to Commissioner Klaus who did the work on putting this together or working with United Way on putting it together.
Yeah, um, thank you. So yeah, like you said, Chair, I don't have a whole lot to add. Um, this is just a follow-up on the conversation we had prior to going into summer recess and it took a little bit of time to get the numbers updated with EFSP. And they also coordinated with their partner organizations on their letters. So we were kind of waiting for them to hear back from their organizations on that before I brought this final copy forward. So I'm asking the board for the thumbs up to do the signature block. And I figured since we're back from recess, we could also sign it if we're okay with that. And then last time we spoke about this, there were some good suggestions thrown out from commissioners on who to send the letter to. So I would appreciate some advice or if we're going to have like if we're going to have staff send this out, maybe just kind of understanding like who we're going to have them send the letter to. Because last time we talked about it, there were names thrown out that I didn't necessarily think of. And so, yeah, I just thought we could have a conversation about that or if anyone has any thoughts on that, I'd appreciate it.
So any, let's start with the letter itself. Any concerns or comments or suggestions about the draft letter of support?
No, I don't have any edits to the letter. I think the letter looks fine in terms of Commissioner Klaus's question. I think last time we talked about sending it to just our delegation as well as Congresswoman Randall, just because of the county that she covers, which is Mason County and EFSP has been covering that area as well. I would think it would be you know, for the board to sign on to it and then have Amy send it. That way it's coming us, you know, from the county and we can be CC'd on that email just so for our awareness. I think that would be the most efficient way. That's just my suggestion.
Okay.
Okay.
I concur.
Anything else on this item? Commissioner Grant?
No, that sounds, I think that sounds good to me.
Okay, good. Good work, Commissioner Klaus. Thank you. Any other commissioner items? If the county manager and clerk are okay, I was going to quickly just talk about the minutes.
Oh, sure. Yes.
Because Commissioner Klaus raised the issue of our minutes and I had to re, Commissioner Mejia and I were like struggling to remember exactly where we landed and why we landed there. Amy did an awesome job of walking me through exactly what we do and why we do it. And then she, I assume with county managers, concurrence had already kind of come up with some changes, which I thought were 100% right. Which I want to summarize. And then I think there's a couple of lingering questions that we could discuss. I think optional, I would call them, items. So just to talk about what we were doing, what we were doing was commissioner's staff taking notes for board business meetings, putting them up. When she said laser fish, which got me confused, that's just means putting it on the website. That's just the program that's used to do that. So that was
Not actual laser fish?
Not like actual films and like dark rooms with readers that I had a flashback to college research. So, so that just means like putting them on the website quickly. They're action oriented, which is means they're like, you know, it kind of follows the agenda and just kind of summarizes the action taken. It's not a blow-by-blow. Commissioner Klaus said this, Commissioner Mejia said that. I mean, I have committees that do that, but that's not what they're doing. So those are really kind of what people expect, but then all of our other work sessions are regular meetings and for those, we were doing them a different way. We were relying on departments to create the minutes for those particular meetings, which wasn't a great system ever. But at least in the old way, when every meeting was a different, every topic was a different meeting. If somebody got them in, they could be posted and maybe there's one that's straggling out there. But now that we've kind of consolidated things into blocks of work sessions, it's like one delay, you know, one department, like maybe we cover four topics with four departments. Three of them get their meeting minutes in, but if one doesn't, the whole thing doesn't go up. You know, so it just made a bad system, a clunky, bad system even worse, kind of with our new structure. So the idea according to the clerk now is that we're really going to have the commissioner's office take the responsibility to do those action-oriented style meeting minutes and put them up just like they do the business, like not make a distinction there. So the meetings are done in a consistent way, in a timely way and in an accessible way because they're going to go up on them. So to me, that solves 99.9% of the problem. To the extent there was a problem. Everything we were doing was legal and vetted and I talked to the former county manager about that. But this is, but this is a better way, I think. So I'm happy with all of that. The, the two lingering items that commis, that clerk and I discussed was we, we got away from several years ago having formal board approve, approval of minutes. There is no need to do that legally. I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but you could change to where we approved all minutes or we just approved the business meeting minutes, the Tuesday at 2:00 PM. Or we could stick with the current system of not doing approval minutes. So those are kind of three options. The law doesn't require us to do any of those. It's really a disc, our discussion. And then a second question, the clerk suggested that if we were going to choose the middle option, which is have formal approval of the 2:00 PM Tuesday, but not the others, you could change code to kind of clarify like why, to kind of create a basis for why you would be doing, drawing that distinction and talk about work sessions versus the business meeting, even though they're technically all regular meetings under OPMA. Again, I think that's unnecessary and overly confusing myself. I would rather just have the initial set of changes and leave it right there, but I just want to throw that all out there because the board could engage in a debate about which ones we want to formally approve and whether we would want to change the code in any way to support that change. Commissioner Fornier?
I, I'm not married to any, I, I appreciate the way you described the cleanup. I think that's perfect. That's absolute, that makes it, yeah, like you said, consistent. It makes it effective and there's no questions about anything. I'm, whether we approve minutes or not, I, I, I don't, I'm not tied to anything, but that I would say there, there could be benefit to us because there have been you know, places in the last few years where people, I, I don't remember that. I don't remember saying that. I, that's not, you know, that's not what I heard that day. If we bring, you know, what we discussed into that next meeting and we all say, yes, this is it, that kills any of those. You know, any of those conversations in the future because we're like, no, we all adopted that. That's officially what was said.
It seems like the things, when, when we, when we get into that, it's more specific than what we're going to see in these types of action-oriented minutes. I mean,
But as we got better about taking votes on things and getting clear board direction,
Yeah.
that's what would be reflected in there because in our absence of doing that in the past, when we've done this kind of thing, there's, it's not entirely clear, but we've, we, I think we've cleaned that up. I, so like there could be, if I was to make an argument for anything, it would be that.
Commissioner Mejia?
I, so with the approval of minutes though, so what you're saying, it would be just the approval of the 2:00 PM board meeting, right?
It could be.
Not every
It could be. You could do either one. There would be an argument to say, since those are the ones where we're most often taking legislative action, it's the most, you know, legally significant meetings that we have because we, we concentrate legislative action in those meetings. There would be an argument that if the board's not going to go through the process of approving every set of minutes for every work session, blah, blah, but we, if you could do those, that, that would be one way of, of kind of dividing it up and finding a middle ground. It's just something the clerk threw out and I, I think we just debated that very thing in the past. Commissioner Klaus?
I agree with what I think I hear Commissioner Fornier saying. I really like the idea that like, if we were to approve meeting minutes for all of our meetings, it would kind of like proactively nip in the bud any conversations about like what we thought we heard or what direction we thought we gave. For me personally, if we were able to have the opportunity to approve those work session minutes, that would be so helpful for me to have it documented and included in the packets as something we're approving. That would save a lot of heartache, at least for me and maybe a couple others, but I think that the middle ground option of just doing that for the business meetings could get a little messy. You talked about maybe changing the code to reflect that. And I agree with you that it could be overly complicated to go into a code change rather than just doing a blanket-like procedure for all of the meeting minutes. I would agree with Commissioner Fornier that if I were going to argue for anything, that's what I would argue for.
Yeah, because you could do it just by motion. You could just have a motion. We're going to, board's going to approve all minutes, you know, in consent agendas for whatever, board's going to approve only the 2:00 PM or board's not, you know.
Yeah.
We don't need to do a code change, in my opinion.
Yeah, and I, I think that we do give enough direction and we even make enough motions in work sessions that I think it's warranted to have minutes for those meetings as well.
We will have minutes. And that's the other thing I would, maybe I would just counter devil's advocate is like we'll have the minutes and we'll have them quicker and in a more consistent form. So whether we approved them or not, we can still use them in the way Commissioner Fornier said, is like refer back to them to say, hey, what did we say? So I mean, if you think it gives it extra gravitas to have them actually approved, you're assuming that we're all going to really, you know, be diligent and scrutinize them and debate them and clarify. I mean, assuming that the staff gets them right, we can look at them and there's, you can always say, hey, I think, I think the clerk messed up this minute and let's do an amendment.
But all the meetings are videoed and stuff. Is there ever discrepancy at that level, Chair?
Yeah.
Just go back to the video to clarify.
Yeah.
I will, just to push back a little bit, I had to watch for like an hour and a half, a 10-minute conversation because we were interrupting each other and talking over each other so much and we were going back and forth and we would raise an issue 10 minutes later that we already thought we got through and it took a long time and I know.
Minutes will help though, like in terms of a guide to what's on the videos.
That would be awesome.
Commissioner Grant, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would agree that I, I think that with Commissioner Fornier and Emily on the, or and Commissioner Klaus on this, that I, I'm really interested in having him for, for all of the, all of the sessions. Just, I think it would just help us to be able to look back and see what direction we gave.
But we already have them. It exists.
And, and then so, and then I, I'm interested in actually approving, you know, doing like a blanket approach. It's fine. I would like to be able to approve. I mean, it helps me also, I mean, to real, remember that I, hey, you need to review those and, you know, just administratively, it's one of those things for me where hey, don't forget to review those when I'm going into a meeting, when I see it on an agenda. So I think it'd be, I just think it'd be helpful to do that.
Clerk?
I may just want to clarify that the minutes will not include necessarily those back and forth.
They just say, we talked about this subject, we voted and the vote was 4-1.
And board direction.
That's it.
They're not transcription.
Yeah, they're not transcriptions. They are action items. That's it.
And if ever, any, if ever a commissioner had a question about on a particular item, the clerk can get that information. So you don't have to watch hours and hours of, of meetings.
Just to clarify when we're saying like action oriented, I understand motions are included in that. Is board direction to staff also going to be considered an action item that would be reflected in the minutes?
Well, to Commissioner Fornier's point, we're moving away from the, except in executive session, we can't get formal direction. I prefer that direction to the county manager is a actual motion because then it clarifies. Times that there's been confusion is the times when folks have not been clear that it's been a motion. The motion allows there to be the structure around, we're making an official motion, there's a second, there's conversation and then there's a vote. Then it's absolutely crystal clear for staff as to what we're going to do. That has been helpful for us to keep the confusion and what I thought and I thought and keeping it on the straight and narrow.
But everything county manager said, I don't disagree with. But if for whatever reason, we don't make a motion and we give direction, that could be noted, that would be something that you'd note in the action-oriented minutes.
Absolutely.
Just say like, there was a topic on the agenda, we had discussion on the topic. No action was taken.
No, if there's direction given to staff, I'd say direction was given to staff to do blah, blah, blah.
Pursue negotiation with blah, blah, blah. I mean, that would fall, to answer Commissioner Klaus's question, that would fall within an action. Even though it's probably better if we do a motion, but if for whatever reason, we fail to do a motion, but we give direction, that I think that would be, I'm just confirming.
For example, the, the, the direction given to the county manager and the chair to have a meeting with the commerce would have said gave direction to county manager and chair to have a meeting with commerce. Five, five thumbs up to do that or whatever would say.
All right. Well, so that's clear. We're all good with that. So then I guess the, and, and nobody wants to change the code. So the only sort of lingering item is formal approval by the board of these minutes. Can we think on that? Yeah. Want to bring that back next week?
I have a question about it. I'm okay with thinking about it. Would we be approving them? I have a question about it, um, I'm okay with thinking about it, um, would we be approving them? At work sessions for the work session meetings, or would we approve everything? Okay, so all work session meetings?
I would say it would be, yeah, just like, like voucher list, chunks of them would be on the consent agenda on the two PM board meeting. Yeah, that's, that's a final action, it's in a consent calendar, it's on the agenda, approval of minutes. In a big packet, I would think. That's, I mean, I think that's how, unless the clerk.
And I'm just, cause some of this was being garaged and shopped around by the clerk, I gotta make sure that there's enough bandwidth.
Yes.
With our one person clerk. To do everything that the board is asking, understanding that the way we had it was not illegal, but it was pretty, it was a pretty open.
And it was done that way in order, because of the lack of bandwidth.
And so we're shifting, I just want the board to understand, we're shifting from departments now to the clerk, to then add, there's an additional item and materials that have to be prepared. I need to talk with her to make sure that she has the time to do that.
But this would, i- if we choose an approve, like we've alr- it's already been put to bed that the clerk would be doing this work now, that's already vetted?
We're, we're still workshop in that.
Okay.
Like that, that's something that she's working on as a process improvement, we've talked about it with the directors, the initial response from the directors was, well, that's a lot of work. Cause all the directors, uh, they're, they take care of their own component, I agree with the commissioner in concept. That it is cleaner this way, it's up to make sure that she has enough room on her plate to do this, adding it now that we're approving everything and. Getting those ready for business meetings is yet an additional workload.
Yeah.
Can we consider a phased approach?
Maybe, yeah, I think that I'm wanting to, to listen to the directors about the level of work, cause I haven't been in that, uh, space and. I was surprised that the directors weren't like, yeah, great, take it on, they're like, whoa, in fact, one of the directors said, once you get this going. We're open to having, having you train our staff how to do it, because Amy has, Amy's one of the hardest workers in this county, and she's notorious for taking on more and more. And I wanna protect her plate so that she doesn't get overloaded, is that fair to say, clerk?
Can we bring this up for follow up or?
Okay, so you're saying, you're saying that the direct, I just wanna make sure I understand what you're saying, you're saying the directors were. I would have assumed what you'd assume, that they'd be like, cool, I don't have to worry about this anymore and get badgered by the commissioner's office for these minutes that I'm always late on. Now it's gonna be, but they, but their reaction was, they were worried about Amy being able to do it, cause it's so much work?
Yes, they're worried about the workload that flows through, through on the agenda, because if, we have stepped up quite a bit of things. In our process to be of service to the commissioners. And so this is yet a process change that we have to make sure, so as Josh said, taking it in steps would probably be good. Cause we have to cross over, I agree, we're gonna get a faster product, we have a new executive assistant that's working and doing well, but we gotta bring her up to speed to have support, so.
So, so maybe before any decisions are made. We kick it.
I would say, give Amy just a couple more weeks to talk this through, cause she's developing a form and I think it'll, it'll be a better process. I just don't want to be put in the place where, because this has happened, where a, a direction is taken and then some commissioners are like.
All of a sudden, we have new expectations and you're unsure if you can meet immediately.
Right.
Okay, and I didn't mean to get ahead of you guys, I was trying to follow up on Commissioner Klaus, who had followed up with me and asked me where that stood, so and I, we were having these conversations and. Um, I think we like the direction you're headed, um, for sure, and then we'll just wait for you guys to come back and say you're ready to move to the next step.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other commissioner items this morning, Commissioner Klaus?
Um, I just wanted to touch base on the, uh, hiring for two positions, the. DEI position and then the criminal justice position, do we have any updates on where we're at with those?
Yeah, and we've sent, uh, we've sent out updates to the board in emails, um.
Okay.
The DIA position, uh, most likely we'll have to go back out for recruitment, and the criminal justice position is working its way through. Recruitment process.
And working its way through, where are we at in the process?
Uh, we are in final stages of interviews.
Okay, have you had like more than one round of interviews for that one?
Yes.
Okay, so then final, are you in like the final round of interviews and you would move to like reference checks the next?
We have not made an offer.
Okay, do you have a final round of interviews coming up?
We've had a final round of interviews and there's under consideration.
Okay, do you feel like you might need to go out for, and you maybe can't say, but.
Well, I think the sensitivity of this topic is that there's folks internally that have applied.
Okay.
And so you're asking some specific questions about a recruitment thing that has a sensitive nature to it.
Yeah, makes sense, okay, um, thank you, I haven't seen any emails about it, but I appreciate the update.
Anything else? Commissioners before we adjourn this morning, we have Board of Health today, three forty-five. So, see everybody then, we're adjourned.